Good evening and welcome to the June 1st meeting of the Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk to my right prior to the completion of any staff presentation, so if you'd like to speak on item two, you need to submit your comment, your request to speak card before the end of item two. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes and that will be noted on the clock again to my right here. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone in the center. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. Our first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Mr. Tilly to lead us in the pledge this evening.
[Inaudible]
So the first section of the Planning Commission meeting will be presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. Are there any people in the audience who are interested in addressing the Planning Commission for an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
No communications tonight.
Duly noted. Item C, disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda items at this time, and I'll start looking to my left to Commissioner Leibig. And to my right. Okay, and then for me as well. Moving on to the first item on the agenda, Agenda Item Number One, which is consideration and approval of the minutes from the May 4th commission meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Sternfels and a second from Commissioner Castillo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item two, presentation on the Age Friendly Action Plan. Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager John Robinson on this item.
Thank you.
Good evening. This commission's in the business of planning for the future and looking at the future and getting the city prepared for what's going to happen, so it's not news to you that the population in the United States and other countries is aging, and one of the challenges facing cities worldwide is preparing for the different needs that their aging populations will have. We have some statistics noted in this, in the staff report, but one of the striking ones is that the West Sacramento Senior and Disabled Mobility Study projected that between 2000 and 2030, the senior population in the Saqhog region would increase by 153 percent. So, and you'd expect that to happen in West Sacramento as well, that's thousands and thousands of people who have the same wants and needs as anybody of any age, but a lot of times their means to achieving those is different, and cities that fail to plan for that, you know, risk losing the support of their constituents. So the council recognized this trend, and in 2015, the city joined the AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities, which is an affiliate of the World Health Organization, Age Friendly Cities effort. And the import of this program, basically it's a commitment that by cities that participate to consciously evaluate their level of age friendliness, the extent to which their cities are laid out and operated in a way that's conducive to the well-being of their older residents, and to commit to make an effort to improve their age friendliness. So as part of that commitment, the city committed to a five-year cycle with a two-year planning piece at the beginning where we would do our self-evaluation and our community outreach, and then a three-year implementation cycle at which point then we'd go back and look at the plan and recalibrate and continue in that fashion. The approach that the city council took is a little different in terms of the outreach piece. The mayor and the city council felt strongly that the focus of this effort should not just be on projects but on really trying to embed the consciousness of age friendliness into the work that the city does in all of its different elements. So for the, sort of the governing body to develop the plan, the mayor and the city council set up the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, of which we've got two council members, you've got Mayor Protam Johannissen and Councilmember Sandin that chair that, and then there are representatives from each of the advisory commissions on there. So Chairperson Austin has been on there, and every commission is represented there. And really, the concept is that, you know, the city's age friendliness overall is not going to be a function of one department or one discipline, but it's really going to be something that emanates from all of the different kinds of work that the city does. So we've been working, we've been working on the plan for about two years, and we're getting ready to take the plan to the city council, and one of the ideas that came from the committee at our last meeting was that we should bring the plan around to the advisory commissions from which we had the members, to let you all look at it, comment on the document, and really to facilitate a discussion about age friendliness as it pertains to the work that you do. And that's really not a difficult discussion to have in this venue because so much of the work that the commission does here relates directly to the way the city is organized and the way, you know, the way it affects people's quality of life very directly. So the work that you've done around making the community more walkable, promoting mixed use development, making sure that the amount of affordable housing is consistent with the needs of the population, all these, all these types of work that you do pertain directly to the city's age-friendly efforts. So that's, that's basically it for the presentation. I'd love to, I'd love to entertain any questions that you might have and facilitate a discussion around age friendliness as it pertains to your work here in the commission.
Thank you very much. I'd like to provide just a couple introductory remarks before turning it over to my commissioners for their feedback. So I think it's important to note that it's coming to our Planning Commission before the final draft is drafted and forwarded on to the city council, so bear in mind that any feedback that you provide may be able to be incorporated into either the staff report or the final draft of this Age Friendly Action Plan. I'd also like to take an opportunity to acknowledge Vice Chair Sternfels, and particularly Dr. Alex Kelter, who was a former Planning Commissioner, who also was, served on this Age Friendly Commission on behalf of the Planning Commission, and Dr. Kelter provided several hours of input and feedback into this effort. I also want to acknowledge several stakeholders were involved, so lots of groups were involved, lots of individuals, there was some really great outreach that was done on behalf of this, on behalf of this report. So given kind of some of those framing remarks, I'd like to see if there are any comments, and I'll actually start with Commissioner Laporte to my left, to my right.
Thank you. This is obviously very interesting and needed in, in West Sacramento, and not just here but all over Sacramento, with our aging population and things that if we don't plan for it, like you said, is going to be a big problem. So one of the issues, or rather, questions I had was on the housing component, and maybe I might have missed it in there, but the number of housing that we're aiming for in terms of affordability, the only number I found in there was 50, that can't be right.
Well, that, yeah, that's not intended to be the total amount, so we didn't, we didn't want to try and subsume like the housing element, so we're saying that within that, within that period, the city will help facilitate the development of 50 new affordable housing units, but that, that's not a, that's not a total or a target, so I, that might be a good comment to give that more context, if that's not clear in the, in the document, maybe we should reference those.
That was, I mean, that was the main thing that really stood out to me in that, because that was obviously a critical piece to this, and although obviously people want to stay in their home as long as possible, but sometimes that's not possible. But then, again, you know, your detail on walkability and incorporating as much of the other elements that were already, including streetcar and some other trends, would be, I think, critical to that, the transportation piece.
Right.
Commissioner Castillo.
Thanks for, for the presentation. It's very well thought out, obviously it took a lot of work into bringing all these people together and incorporating all these thoughts into this particular plan. As a former commissioner that sat on the intergenerational, Parks and Rec intergenerational commission, obviously senior services is very important to me and something that I followed on, on the Parks Commission. One of the things that I'm interested in particularly in the report is the open space for seniors in terms of the parks. I know there's a lot of parks in West Sac, obviously, as a member of the Parks Commission, I recognize that, but I don't see much, I know in my previous roles that I had before, there was ideas of incorporating, you know, play structures that are friendly to seniors and youth, or, and kids, and I'm not sure if there's been any thought about that intergenerational, mixed use of facilities, particularly outdoors, so just want to get your, your thoughts on, on any outdoors activities, or if you can expand a bit on that.
You make a really good point. Now, the, the recommendations that are reflected in the document are really kind of a synthesis of feedback that we receive, which I probably should have done a better job summarizing, from, you know, AARP did a mail-out survey, a statistically valid survey, and we did a number of different outreaches in terms of, we did a couple of like town hall style meetings, and we did a online survey, we did a phone survey. So we really tried to, tried to synthesize the feedback that we got from that into these recommendations, but inevitably, you know, there's excellent ideas that didn't get captured there, and I think you just described one of them, so I think that's something that could probably be woven into one of the, one of the existing recommendations, is some kind of allusion to that. Certainly in the, in the sections where we talk about additional services, there was, in, in the feedback that we received, there weren't specific mention from community members of exactly what you just said in terms of, you know, play structures, but there was a lot of mention of city services, city facilities, opportunities to get out and meet other people and interact with other people, so I think they're the kind of facilities that you just described would be a perfect fit, maybe in that, in that section to mention.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Sternfels.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your leadership on this item. I certainly echo your gratitude for Dr. Kelter and all the members from the various commissions, and certainly to you, John, for your leadership on this, because I know this has been an additional big lift for you and taken a lot of coordination effort, and certainly from my brief participation in one meeting I attended, it was clear that the community of stakeholders who were participating really appreciated all the efforts that you had taken and to other city staff to make this open and transparent and provide opportunities for feedback and, and really hear folks, and not, not just take their information and put it somewhere, but really listen in here, and so I thank you for that. I think, hitting on the point you mentioned in your presentation, that we, this document really does an excellent job of looking at things we're already doing that are working and finding ways to target those strategies towards the age-friendly community, or within that context, and so I really appreciate looking through the document, seeing programs that I was already familiar with, but with a kind of a new, a new slant to tackle the aging population. There's two areas where I have kind of some, some general feedback on, and the first is echoing Commissioner Laporte's comments on the housing side. While I think using existing programs and existing goals and trying to target them towards age-friendly population is really smart, I think on this housing goal with the 50 units is one, it doesn't just, it doesn't fit well for me. I think largely we know we're working towards that project anyway, and so I think to call it out in this plan is something we're doing specifically for the age-friendly community when it's not specifically senior housing, while certainly some of it may end up being available to seniors, there's no guarantee on that. I just feel like maybe we can do more in this area, and I recognize that the plan is short-term, so making a commitment to doing senior housing in particular, or any type of additional housing would not be prudent, but maybe we can make some kind of commitment to at least study the issue of senior housing adequacy for our next housing element update to actually include something in there that addresses, you know, some type of analysis of our existing housing stock for seniors versus the need, and maybe, you know, starts to contemplate how we get there, because we know this is an issue. This is an issue for all population segments, but certainly for, for aging adults, and particularly as their mobility needs change. So I just want to provide that feedback on that item in particular. The other item I wanted to bring some attention to was, I think it's the last one in the document around eliminating health disparities. I found this one really interesting because I think it's critically important, and yet it's also something that is more of a county function in a lot of ways when it comes to public health policies or state function, and not something that, I know city, city staff has a lot of resources dedicated towards public health policy. I found some of the items, the activities in there really intriguing, particularly the ones focusing on restricting liquor store and fast food restaurant permits and enforcing tobacco control laws. I was having a hard time making the connection to how that's really going to help eliminate health disparities for our seniors, certainly our, our emerging seniors, everyone's going to be a senior at some point, so, you know, certainly there's a, there's some connection there, but I'm wondering if maybe we can do more on that item in particular, and maybe it's having a conversation with the county or, you know, other public health organizations to see if there's other best practices that we could adopt. You know, I think about items that we could do to support the active living, you know, I know other communities have developed some pretty strict policies at the local level around soda and other things, and I'm not suggesting we go that route, but certainly taking some time to think about what are some of the other best practices in creating better public health outcomes that maybe could be in our, our realm of scope and ability to influence. So those, those are my only two comments in the document. I think it's fantastic work, again, I really appreciate all the effort you and everyone else has put into this, and thank you.
Thanks, that's a really good comment, thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Vu.
Hi, good afternoon. Quick question. Many years ago, I worked for an organization that advocated for pedestrian accessibility in walkable communities, so I'm very happy to see that component as part of this plan. My question is, how does this plan, or proposed plan, mesh with the city's current plans on fixing and enhancing or completing sidewalks? And more particularly, how does the city plan to fund or prioritize funding, taking into consideration the proposed plan and what you guys are already having the works?
You know, to be honest, I, I do not know what the city's plans are for sidewalks in general, I mean, I don't know that that's a city thing, right?
Well, coming off the general plan, we had all the complete streets policies that were in general plan and closing gaps, so now we're working toward how that's really, how we're really going to work to achieve that goal, you know, over the general plan period, but we definitely need to be, you know, moving in the direction of more sidewalks, more bikeways, and then completing networks to make it easier to get around, you know, without a car.
So the gist, you know, in terms of this plan, you know, the, the approach that we're trying to take is to advance the existing ADA planning that we already need to do, and then to include, include within that, you know, and in related work, so in the, in the Mobility Action Plan, that's not the other one, the streets, there's item number one or two, there's a, there's a mobility-related item that has in it, in appendix to an existing document where we would look at kind of a safe routes for seniors approach, where, you know, where the, where there are concentrations of older people and where they want to get to, and trying to use that as one of the criteria to prioritize the work, the ADA-related work, and other work that we do to try and fix signals. And even, even now, there's a, there's a grant that AARP has that we're looking at applying for, that, you know, we're looking at prioritizing, you know, a particular signal that folks at Markham McDowell Manor spoke to us about, that they don't, you know, the, the signal timing is not good, so that's, that's an item that we're looking at. So, you know, there's not, we're not making specific funding recommendations, but we're trying to make sure that, that age friendliness is included in the criteria that are used within those.
Thank you, Commissioner Leibig.
Thank you. I want to echo Commissioner Sternfeld's comments, and thank everyone who worked on this, and specifically acknowledge the efforts to integrate this plan into our existing plans. The city has, would have a difficult time implementing an age-friendly plan if it weren't integrated into the rest of our plans, such as the homeless action plan, the broadband plan, the bike pedestrian plan, the mobility plan, going on and on. As, as we approve policy or work on policy, we're looking towards those plans, and so it is important to integrate it all. I also want to note, the, the plan is very ambitious, there's a lot to get done under this plan, and I noted some of the dates, which are almost immediate, but as also Commissioner Sternfels point out, the city's already embarked on several of these, and we have several partners within our city, such as community action groups like BB Can, Yolo County, the state city services, and therefore I think it, it is achievable. So, anyway, thank you again for all your work on this. Oh, you know what? Sorry, missed my flags. A couple, couple things while I was reading it. I, I really liked the introduction, I tried to read it, I'm sure somebody else noticed it's not in English.
Well, the, yeah, okay, you, you got me on my ipsum lorem on the, yeah, we'll, we'll fill in the mayoral pieces, yeah.
The other thing is, within the introduction, as you're, as you're explaining the community outreach, I think it would be helpful to explain the ranking system. For example, there, there's, you know, the, I don't want to say one through five, but under rank there's numbers, and I wasn't really clear on what the numbers actually meant.
Okay, that's a great point, thank you. Right.
And one last flag. Oh, for the quarterly newsletter for older residents, just clarification, well, we used to have City Lights. Is this newsletter just for older residents then?
Yeah, because the idea, we used to send the City Lights publication out in paper form to all the residential addresses, and I don't remember the exact number, but that was very expensive, and we would, we would find them, you know, strewn around, not having visibly been read, so we went to City Eye Lights, which saved money but left out a segment of mostly the older population in the community that prefers a piece of paper with a larger font, or they don't have access to a computer for various reasons, can't use City Eye Lights. So we're looking, kind of a, looking at kind of a Back to the Future approach where we would have an opt-in, we would do some kind of utility bill insert or some other outreach to identify folks that we think would like to receive the mailer, so it'd be, it'd be a limited thing focused, it'd be an opt-in, limited, and primarily focused on people, you know, seniors and folks with, maybe with visual impairments or otherwise just that prefer the paper, so kind of meeting them halfway.
Okay, so is it, is the intent to be a paper version of the City Eye Lights?
Essentially, but I mean, it could be less frequent, so it'd be kind of, it'd be kind of tree-topping the important things that happened and including some important phone numbers. We'd have to do some, some research with our users to think, you know, what are the things that they want to hear, but that was, you know, one of the comments that we got pretty consistently from the older folks that we spoke with is, where did, where did the paper version of Eye Lights go? I want that back. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, if we can do, you know, a few hundred of those rather than several thousand, we can afford to do it and still, you know, meet their, meet their needs.
Thank you. Good job, and I look forward to growing old here.
We should all look forward to growing old. Thank you again for your, your efforts. I will share a couple of comments. One is, I shared many comments at the last Age Friendly Advisory Committee meeting, I'll highlight two of them. One is a suggestion to, mostly for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, but one is to review this action plan roughly annually or so, just as a reminder to see, you know, where we are and whether, you know, kind of, we need to shift gears on our trajectory. I also want to echo in my comments the, the recommendation to incorporate the themes of this as much as possible into existing plans and revised plans as they move forward. And then the other recommendation that I made was, was for, we all had one representative from each commission at the, on the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, but I also recommended that the, all the commissioners, like you're doing today, get an opportunity to weigh in, because there are some really smart individuals on these commissions, including my colleagues here. So I'll leave with two additional comments. One is just acknowledging some of the work that's currently being done. AARP has been a really great partner in advocating for affordable housing, and they partnered with the center that I work for in looking at affordable housing narrative and kind of changing people's understanding and perception of affordable housing and the need for affordable housing, and AARP was a great sponsor and promoter of that. And then also recommending that we reach out to the Yolo County Commission on Aging, they have some really great staff and elected officials who are advocates for some of the county programs that Commissioner, I'm sorry, that Vice Chair Sternfels was referencing, and I think that would be really great. And I'll leave with one, with one anecdote. When we finally paved the trail, the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail, what was excellent was that, you know, you see, saw people out there with strollers, kids on bicycles, and people with walkers, and I remember really distinctly seeing people from literally all walks of life using this paved trail, and so what I really envisioned is that this report is able to benefit not just seniors but just increase the quality of life throughout our city. So thank you personally for, for all of your work and for everyone who's contributed to this. Are there any other thoughts from commissioners that they want to provide? Seeing none, thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to item three. I will remind those in the audience once again that there are, if you would like to complete a request to speak card, they're over there, you will submit them to the woman who just came up to, to my, to my right, and you need to submit that before the item is up, so we have items three and four. Item three is a public hearing.
Chair Austin, was, was there any public comment on our prior item before we move on?
There was none. Should I, is anyone who would like to comment on item two? We will be moving on then, thank you for the reminder. So moving on to item three, which is a public hearing regarding proposed major modifications to Myers Ranch tentative subdivision map, number 5042. Mr. Hardy.
Good evening, Commissioner. So tonight before you is Cartwright Engineers is seeking to do a major modification to a previously approved tentative subdivision map for 16 lots on a little over 15 acres, located up on the screen in blue, south of the high school, off the Jefferson Boulevard. The subdivision was part of the old Jefferson subdivision back in 1913, and so there's existing private roadway network, even though it hasn't been formally approved, is still there. The project was previously approved in 2014, and unbeknownst to the development of the time, those roadways were deemed private, and so the project had to be redesigned to accommodate the private roadway network and address that, which they did coming back in June of 2016, and they also changed the drainage as well. And part of the condition of that 2016 map required them to get proper permitting for drainage on the east side of the property into the canal along Partridge. In discussions, the applicant was unable to get permitting successful for that particular drainage, they are going back to the, the original drainage, which is along French Avenue, where it sort of bisects the property existing. Could you change the next slide? Thanks. So in the center of the project, you see French Avenue on the north, and that right-of-way will continue if it was to ever to be developed in the future through the project site, and that project will be directed to the southern portion of the property and then connect back up to the existing drainage that bisects the property. So what precipitated the major modification was, is one, the drainage moving back to the center of the property, and two, because of that, you have drainage to the north coming through the property, going through a private, a public road, back to a private drainage. The roadway needed to be private versus public as it had been before. The lot stayed the same, the configuration stays the same, no other changes to the, the project were proposed, and because of those changes, we decided that for transparency's sake, the commission reviewed it before, we bring it back detailing those changes to the project that the applicant is requesting. It's sort of, between the private roadway network and the drainage, it's sort of back to, really the only way that it sounds like the project might be feasible. So that concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions for you. I do have staff, Mark Collier from Development Engineering, as well as the applicant's engineers here.
Thank you very much for that presentation. What I'm going to do at this time is see if there are any questions from commissioners, I will then open the public hearing and call people up to speak, and I'll let you know who's on deck to speak next, and so I will actually start to my left with Mr. Leibig. actually start to my left with Mr. Leebig.
Are there requests to speak?
There, there are many requests to speak.
Okay, I will.
Do you want a number?
No, I will, with, I will wait until the public hearing is done.
Commissioner Voe? Mr. Sternfelds? Is anybody, like, you know, like?
I do have. So, so this is a question for Mr. Hardy. In terms of the road being private instead of public now, what does that mean in terms of city discretion over how the road is developed in the future? And I, and I'll be, get straight to the point. Does this give the HOA or whoever's running the, responsible for the road, the ability to put a gate up or, you know, to make other improvements or, or take, or, you know, do other things without the city being engaged in that process? And what does that look like?
We'll have Mark to that.
Good evening. What the standard specifications call for is private roads to be designed and constructed per public road standards, and that is what is shown is on the cross-section for Myers Court.
So, what about the entry, I mean, do it, it being a private road, would they have the ability to put a gate up without the city reviewing it, or?
I think special approval to put a gate up, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that would require special approval. They're not proposing to do so.
I realize they're not proposing to do so now. I, I just, I'm, I'm thinking long-term. I just want to, I just wanted it on the record and clear. That's all. Thank you.
We've also required an HOA for maintenance purposes and have included the requirement that the city has enforcement rights on that, so that they can't go in in the future and vote to change things without our review and approval.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Casio?
I do have questions, but I can wait for the public hearing, or?
Either way.
I'll, I'll wait for the public hearing just to hear some comment from the applicant.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So, I will be opening the public hearing. You will each have three minutes to speak. If you start going over, I will stop you. That gives an opportunity for everybody to have the same amount of time available to address the commission. So, opening the public hearing. First up, we will hear from Chandra Sharma, and on deck will be Eric Raybold.
Good evening. My name is Chandra Sharma. I actually live north of the development. I didn't quite understand the entire presentation, but my question has to do with the storm drainage. This year, when we got all the rain, my backyard was very, very flooded. We did call the Myers folks, and they did come out and, you know, put some tarp up and some other things to try to remedy the situation. But, you know, we don't know what the future rainfall is going to look like, but there clearly needs to be issues regarding the storm drainage, because I don't want my backyard to be getting flooded out with this development project.
All right. Thank you for your comment. What I'm going to do is give the applicant an opportunity to respond to all of the public comments after, but please, please remain so you can follow up in a moment. Mr. Raybold?
Do you have the ability to put the map back up?
Yes, if the clerk could please pull that back up. And as he's preparing, Mr. Dale Stone is on deck.
Chandra's house is immediately, Chandra who just spoke is the one on the upper left, just north of the property.
Great, thank you.
My property is behind hers, French Road and north, if you can tell on the map. French Road, shows French Road there. French Road doesn't exist. It's a ditch. It's where all of us put our water. And looking at the proposal, it looks like they're going to continue the ditch or at least give us access, but it's only on the eastern side of French Road, which would help Terry Harris that owns that property, but the rest of us wouldn't. We all put our water in that ditch, always have. Dale, who's speaking next, is off the map but just north of my property. He puts his water in the ditch that runs in front of my property, which goes, that ditch is, is there. It runs all the way to Blacker Canal, which is south of the property and other 10 acres. And that's most of our concern is, where does that water go? If there is no drainage, if they don't put DI's on both sides of French Road, if they're putting French Road in, then there should be a DI on both sides of French Road. So, both people that live, or everybody north of there, will have access to put water. Otherwise, our water goes nowhere, onto each other. So, my other concern has been, if you look at where Lot Two, Three, and Four is, there's basically a mountain of what we call recycle base. It's been there a year and a half. 27 inches of water went on that mountain. Who knows what's in that and where it went. Chandra's well, you can see on the map, is 50, 80 feet from that pile. My well's 150 feet, Dale's is 200 feet from a pile of recycled base, which was never tarp, never wattle, you know, waddles, nothing, just piled there. So, for a year and a half now. So, that's, I think, the biggest concern is where the water's going and, and what the effect is of the property.
Great, thank you.
Other than that, I mean, we've always, when I first seen the property, one acre parcels is pretty good for self-work. Beautiful.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Stone. And then after Mr. Stone, our final speaker is Tom Engel. There is still time if you'd like to submit a request to speak card to do so.
My concerns are about the same as his. I live next to Eric's property, and his, my property's always drained through his, so all my elevations on my drains are set to go downhill towards his property. And now, really has to be dug up and repositioned to go the other direction if we go out the other way. And our, all I'd like to say is all our drainage is on the west side of the road, and here shows it on the east side. Going to make sure we get at least one canal on the right side. But, it all has to work. I mean, it's last year, it was very apparent that our drainage was towards the canal when it worked then. So, like to see it work when, have all the work's done, you know. So, it's important.
Great. Thank you very much for your comment. And Mr. Engel?
Hi, my name's Tom Engel, and I'm representing the property just to the south of this property. If you notice, a French Road in the passage right now, a dirt road goes all the way through. And just to the bottom left, underneath Lot 13, with this proposed plan, creates a landlocked piece of property just to the south of the property, actually two lots to the south. There's, this other canal from Jefferson kind of comes up and comes back around. And with a landlocked piece of property, it really creates an undue burden to access the property, because you can't jump the canal to get to the property, and you can't go through there, and you can't get through the property at Jefferson without trespassing. So, it really creates a landlocked piece of property to the south of Lot 13. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I'm now going to give an opportunity for the applicant to address some of the concerns. I'll offer for the fellow, my fellow commissioners to pose any questions to staff, bearing in mind again that we have planning and public work staff. So, would the applicant like to come up and address some of the questions that have been raised? Thank you. And please be sure to introduce yourself.
Great, yeah. Good evening, everybody. My name's Mike Michaels with Cartwright Engineering. Also in attendance is an owner, representative of the owner. It seems, great concerns and great questions. Most of it seems to have to do with the, the drainage, and that's kind of been, as Mr. Hardy indicated, that's been kind of the root of the, the issue here. French Avenue, you know, runs north-south through there, but baby, basically, there's not a road there now. It's, it's a drainage ditch, and the ditch kind of runs diagonally a little bit through our site. Basically, the drainage design of, for this project, we, we did a drainage study per the city standards in concert with the, the city engineer, Mark Collier, to include sizing the box culvert. And that's basically what we've done, is just trade, change the ditch that's running through there into a box culvert, but sized it to accommodate all of the drainage shed to the north. And we recognize that all the north property rear lots drain to the ditch in French Avenue. And, and so, the, the box culvert's been sized to accommodate all that drainage, convey it down through our site, and then over to the drainage ditch as it, as it currently exists now. All the drainage and everything on our project is contained on our project and conveyed through Myers Court in roadside ditches and inlets into the, the proposed box culvert. I think I've kind of summed up everything as far as the drainage. But, yeah, we did, we did, we do, we do recognize the drainage to the north is conveyed currently now through our project, and it's designed to convey that after the, after the project is built out as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to actually start with questions from our commissioners. You actually may want to stay up there. I imagine that there may be some questions for our commissioners. Commissioner Leebig?
Thank you. I'm actually looking to see if I have any specific questions for the applicant. So, you addressed the drainage. I want to make sure that we don't actually create, however, an isolated parcel. That's, that is something that we have to review as part of our secret determination. So, is the parcel accessible now, the, the one south of your project?
To my understanding, through our project, it's not. There's not an existing road or, you know, that, that runs through the Myers Ranch project. There's, there's an easement there for French Road. It's a private road easement. And so, again, part of the reason we've aligned the box culvert where it is, so that if French Road was ever developed in the future, the storm drain can be extended, the box culvert can be extended in north and south in the French, future French Road, private road right-of-way to accommodate future development.
If you have several questions for staff, we can also have the applicant sit down, and you can start.
I have more questions for staff. That was it.
Great. Okay, thank you. You can continue. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Justin, I had a question regarding the Waters of the U.S. designation of the, or assumed designation of the, of the canal at this point, or the ditch. The Army Corps of Engineers indicated that this flows into the shipping canal, therefore making this Waters of the U.S. How does it do that without pumps? Do you know, do you know that, like, do we expect, do we expect that these are going to be navigable waters of the U.S.?
I think I'll have Mark come on up and speak as to that.
Can't answer that. It, it is pumped.
It is pumped.
And, and then really, the interesting thing about it all is, you know, when the project first came in its first form, they proposed from the get-go to fill in the ditch that runs immediately adjacent to French Road, and they got approval. And when the second one came in and they were proposing to take their drainage to the ditch to the eastern side of the project, they were conditioned to get approval to do that, and they were denied. The city wasn't part of those discussions or negotiations, not privy to detailed explanation as to what the difference, I don't know that there is one, but they said no. And so, here we are, trying to come up with a solution that works.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to guess that it's not navigable, but.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Well, we'll let them make, come to that same, same conclusion. The only other comment I had on the, on the city infrastructure stuff is that I do not wish to waive the underground requirement for the, the power lines. So, but, so, thank you. Other, other comments I have, a lot on the drainage. Thank you for addressing all of that. Sorry, all my flags. I think staff adequately addressed the, the acreage issue regarding the one acre size and .98 being essentially one acre. Oh, I had a question. Under the conditions for the project, Engineering Division Number 22 says, "A street light shall be provided at the intersection of Jefferson Boulevard and Myers Court and on internals' project streets per city standards." Was this a condition on the, on the last round of approval? It was. Okay. I, I was also going, I'm just assuming that we're carrying forward all of the previous requested conditions?
Yeah, you know, I, I think the changes to the conditions are reflected in conditions 37 through 40. So, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Those are new conditions. Everything else is, is previously approved.
I didn't have any comments on those. And I think I've made all of my pre, the same comments that I've got this time I probably made in 2016. So, I'm just going to, I'll stop. Thank you.
You'll, you'll have another opportunity, I promise. Commissioner Vu?
Just a quick question for city staff. Does the developer's explanation about this drainage, does that satisfy, to your knowledge, the neighboring, the neighboring lots' concerns about their ability to have water drain properly from their property?
Oh, it does. I mean, currently, as they had stated, they all flow to the ditch that runs along French Road. Nothing is being changed other than at the boundary of their project. It's going from ditch to culvert, and the culvert's going to have the same capacity as the ditch as far as providing for the drainage that they're flowing to. They're not improving French Road. It's going to stay as is, right? So, they're going to drain as they've always drained, to the ditch.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Sternfelds?
Thank you, staff, for the presentation. So, one thing to be clear, though, and I think this may be where the concern from residents is coming from. If at any point French Road is improved on the north side, you would have an issue where the ditch is going to have to be divided on both sides of the road, and we'd have to find a way to ensure that both ditches ended up in that box culvert. Is that?
Right. The drainage would be, they'd have to put in some sort of a drainage system for the improved road, and it would tie into that culvert. And there's a condition in here that says that, you know, these drainage improvements have to be consistent with the ultimate development of, of French Road.
Okay. I, I know this, we spent a lot of time on this project last time around, and it's a tough one, because this, this is a very old subdivision map that we're all trying to work within and make something happen. But it, it has its challenges without a doubt. And so, I, I want to make sure that, and I think I've, we've all heard from, from city staff and the applicant, that the large, that there are no drainage barriers that we're creating by, by this project, and that everything we've done will maintain the drainage. The one issue we haven't addressed that was brought up by one of the, the folks who came up was the dirt, the dirt mound and water. So, maybe the applicant could just take a moment to address that, so I can feel like we've brought resolution to all the resident concerns.
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, completely spaced on that one. Yeah, the, the project as it's currently designed is kind of an import project, and so that was brought on back when we thought we had the original design, to bring a good, like, like we're saying, it's kind of an aggregate base. It's a good base material for the road. The soils out there, you know, as everyone knows, aren't the, aren't the greatest for roads and for building pads. So, the intent is, is to take out some of the bad dirt under the road, for the road and the utilities, and put that aggregate base, that base material down. So, that mound is going to be part of the, the project. It's not going to, yeah, remain there and everything.
And maybe a question for city staff, do we typically condition that kind of activity when we're stockpiling material for future development?
And I believe that a grading permit was issued for that stockpiling, and I know it was hydro-seeded and, and grass had, had vegetated on there, and I, and maybe over the years, some of it had, had died off and everything during the last storms, but.
Yeah, that's another Mark matter.
Mark, please. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Regarding the stockpile, the stockpile, Mark?
Just kind of talking about the, what conditions we put on the stockpiling of aggregate at the site.
Well, the, the condition that was placed on the stockpile was that it not block existing drainage patterns, and that adequate erosion control and sediment control were placed. And like you said, there were waddles placed around it during the construction period. It was hydro-seeded at the time that it was placed.
I, thank you. Just got a general comment to close my, my thoughts on this one. This is, again, a difficult project on some difficult land in terms of how it's been set up. But we've, I, I voted for this project previously, and I feel like what I've heard tonight has addressed the concerns brought forward by the residents in terms of the drainage, and I see a head shaking. So, if we need to have additional discussion on that, I'm, I'm open. At one point in time, this project, French Road will either need to be developed or not, and I, I think we'll continue. and I, I think the continued challenge I have is that's going to cause an issue for those folks who buy Lot 4 and 13. And, you know, I, maybe that will not ever happen or not happen in the immediate future because of how challenging this area of town is given the old maps. But I think we need to, we need to be prepared and I'd ask city staff to maybe look at what, what if anything we can do for broader strategy around the rest of this area because there's, I know lots of small parcels that have no roadway connections back in this, this area that are just from that old map and, you know, folks are, are going to continue to try to assemble and develop projects out of them, I think, or want to build on them and, and we need to some point have a long-term strategy for that. So I would just ask city staff on that and at the appropriate time, I'm more than happy to move the project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Castillo.
Thanks. Well, I wasn't here in 2016, so it's the first time I, I check out the, the project and read some of the conditions, all the conditions that have been applied. And I just, to help me understand some of the conditions that were, that are on here, I have a couple of questions on other issues aside from the drainage which has already been addressed. But one of the questions, I guess, for public facilities and services policy, which one of the commissioners brought up, the fact that it was, it's waived for four or less lots. Has there been any concern from the applicant as it relates to the public facilities and service policy? Which is on page three. It's the underground, under, undergrounding of existing overhead facilities. I'm just curious if there's been any concern since that was in there?
No. I mean, yeah, if, if, if it had been waived, the condition wouldn't, wouldn't have shown at this point. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have shown on the action form from the previous approvals and it's been carried over from the previous.
Okay. Because the last, the last sentence on there says that the commission can't waive it if they want, so I wasn't sure what.
That's a flag for you guys.
Got it. And then on condition number seven, there's a mention of a sound wall, obviously for in the event that the sound wall is recommended in projects, acoustical study. Obviously that's for, you know, after the construction, I suppose, of that particular project. But someone who works for the railroad and one of the main concerns is noise when it comes to construction, has there been any thought about setting conditions as it relates to impacts that it may have to surrounding communities during construction?
The masonry walls, just to clear up, is only along Jefferson.
Okay.
So in terms of noise, we do have, you know, under the zoning ordinance, we do have noise and construction hours that are already in place and in the mitigation monitoring plan, it does address those as well. If it's, felt that those conditions to restrict those hours further would be necessary, that's something that could be employed. But the mitigation monitoring plan does address the noise issues.
Thank you. And then condition number 30, I know there's mention of fire hydrants locations that are subject to approval by the city's fire marshal and engineer. Do we need to be specific about identifying or developing a plan for access roads by law enforcement or first responders? I know it's pretty contained lot and the main access road is through Myers, obviously. Is there any discussions, I may, I may have missed in the report, about additional accessibility for first responders as it relates to that particular area?
No, Myers Road in its configuration provides for minimum access requirements in itself with no secondary access being required.
All right. Thank you. And then, and then finally, I didn't see anything about parking for the residents there. I'm just, I'm just curious in terms of how that is being addressed on Myers Road. Is it, is it front street parking? Is it just garage parking? Just?
It's, it's built per rural road standards, which is two 12-foot travel lanes and a six-foot wide gravel shoulder. And parking isn't specifically prohibited, but it isn't provided for in the paved area. But these are pretty large lots, I don't, you know.
Okay. I think that's, that's all I have. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lepore.
Yes, I just had one question and it's regarding the HOA fees and so this may be a question more for the applicant. Have the HOA fees been established yet in terms of the amount? I guess it's kind of a two-part question and, and are they, do you feel like they're sufficient to cover, it says private roadway and storm drainage improvement? So if there's any improvements needed in the storm drainage because of capacity, that's, you know, because of the new development and how it affects the neighbors. So if that, if the capacity creates other issues with the storm drain, drainage system is HOA fee, HOA fees sufficient to cover those improvements?
My name is Tom Colleen. I work for CC Meyer, the owner of the property. And to address your question, we will establish an HOA and we go through a pretty standard procedure. We've got two other subdivisions that we've done the same thing. During that establishment, you determine what facilities the HOA will be responsible for maintaining. In this case, since it's a private road, it'll be the private road, the ditches, the drainage system. If, when we construct a sound wall out in the front, any type of improvements that essentially benefit all 16 lots, there would be a budget that would be put together at the front end and then that, from that budget, you would determine what the assessment needs to be. Most of these new subdivisions that we're involved in, we've got one in Sacramento County, we've got one in Lincoln. The roads typically are private and they're maintained in perpetuity by the HOA fees. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sort of. It's more in regards to the storm drainage improvements in terms of if, if, so you're maintaining the storm drains and the neighbors have concerns over capacity and so if, if there's any damage or anything that's caused because of, you know, increased capacity or increased usage, I should say, do you feel like the HOA fees are sufficient to cover those, the maintenance along, you know, say 10 years from now or 20 years from now?
The short answer to that is yes. It can be structured, whatever the cost for maintaining the subdivision improvements, including the drainage, are, would be covered by the HOA fees. Those can be adjusted over a period of time based on actual needs. The other thing I would mention is that our engineers have engineered the capacity of the drop, of the storm drain box culvert, not only to accept and take care of the drainage that's generated by the 16 lots, but also to take care of any drainage that enters in its present state and capacities from the north. So it's simply a pass-through for theirs plus ours and they've engineered that to the capacity that it is. When we submit our civil improvement plans, those will be calculations that the city's engineering department will go through and assure that there's sufficient capacity there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Well, nope, actually, you can have a seat, but I'll, I'll make a couple of statements. So I'll make a couple of statements and give my commissioners another opportunity to weigh in if there's other things that they'd like to comment on. So typically, I'm really a big fan of, of much more dense and infill development. However, one, something that I do recognize is that by building this type of ranch-style home in a, in a, an area that is zoned rural residential in West Sacramento, it helps prevent or provide an alternative to developing really sensitive areas, like for example, in the Delta. And so I actually do appreciate that this is the, I think, the appropriate type of land use for this particular area, right at the buffer of our kind of suburban residential areas and our more rural agricultural areas to the south of our city limits. I do want to provide, go on record and let the applicants know that in West Sacramento, we really, the planning commission historically and the city council historically have not been fans of gated communities. So just be very cognizant and aware of that. There's some really great similar developments that are ranch-style, smaller subdivisions in our city that are not gated and are beautiful and very successful. So just having said that, that was important. So commissioners, are there any other comments or questions that have come up?
I actually have one, just one comment real quick. So one, which I forgot to mention earlier, one of the, one of the findings was affordable housing. And so I'm trying to understand this requirement as it relates to this particular development, given the fact that there's only 16 lots. How do you determine, how do you take that affordable housing concept into consideration when you have 16 lots that are being built?
I would expect that they would do it in lieu fee rather than actually produce units on-site, given that this type of project is not particularly conducive to, you know, having an actual affordable units. And then, and the city can then, you know, use those in lieu fees and actually can leverage them with other funds and actually produce more affordable units. Chair Austin, I was going to ask if you were ready to close the public hearing or not.
I, yeah, I wanted to give my commissioners one last chance, but yes, thank you for the reminder.
I just want to make sure we addressed a comment that Commissioner Leibig made earlier about the undergrounding piece.
If, if I'm not mistaken, David, the undergrounding of the utilities is a standard condition and not necessarily spelled out anymore?
In the municipal code, it is a, it is a standard condition underground those with maps. However, the planning commission does have the discretion to, to waive that requirement. Historically, the commission has done that on small projects and rural projects, but it doesn't mean that you have to now. It's, it's up to you.
Right. And I didn't mean to cause any confusion. It's just in one of the analyses, it does state that we have that right and I just wanted to state that I do not wish to waive that. I think, you know, we have a, we have a, it's not a large subdivision, but it is a subdivision and it's an opportunity to underground utilities, so. And, and as we're working down Jefferson, every property is going through this and we assess every single parcel that's, that's being subdivided in. If it's a, if it's a lot split, for example, we often waive that for a temporary period until the city gets to the point where we're undergrounding it and then the, then the owner would be required to, to underground. So it's more of a delay than a waiver completely, but.
The standard requirement is to underground unless waived by the commission. So commission, condition number 52 describes the undergrounding and so unless the commission is interested in waiving that, that would be what will be applied to the project.
So with that, I'm actually going to close the public hearing. The staff recommendation is to reaffirm the adopted mitigated NEG deck and approve the requested major modifications to the tentative subdivision map. I will entertain discussion or a motion for, for item number three.
I'll move recommended action.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Leibig and a second from Vice Chair Sturmphels. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter to the city council by filing written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much. That's item three. We are moving on to item four. If you are interested in speaking, please complete a request to speak card. I have four speakers. This evening, we will be hearing on item four, the workshop on proposed municipal code amendments for medical cannabis manufacturing facilities in the limited industrial zone from, from Mr. Hardy. And Mr. Hardy, would you please introduce your city colleagues who are joining us today with safety?
Oh, yes. In the audience, we have Nathan Steele from Police Department and Brian Johnson from the Fire Department as well. So the project before you is a workshop and it's proposed at 3911 West Capitol, an industrial, industrial building that's currently vacant in the ML zone. As you can see on the screen, it's ordered by the overpass of 80 and 8050 to the south and Commerce Drive to the north. So the application would require, on the highest level, proposed municipal code amendment. It would also require a development agreement and a conditional use permit. Those are the processes that would need to all be approved for the project to move forward. The project as it's described is a, an extraction facility and the applicant would go into greater detail, they have their team here to go into those exact processes, but it does involve various chemicals. So we don't, the project would involve the marijuana coming to the facility and then going through its various lab procedures to extract the elements out of it that they are looking for too and then repackage them and, in raw form or in other edible type of situations they were proposing in the future potentially doing. And then it would be sold, no, no customers would be coming to the site, there wouldn't be any public to the site, no signage, you really wouldn't know what it is, which is very similar to the existing operation that was reviewed and approved over on Evergreen. The difference between that project, which was in the M1, this is in the ML, is it is solely distribution. So it comes in, in a package and leaves in a package. This one, the actual is coming in, in a package, the package is open, laboratory, extraction is done, repackaged and then sold off as, as needed. So that's sort of, you know, the, the project, it would also require a security plan and fire, would it be reviewing it for appropriate code, fire code approval. The part of the municipal code amendment would require changing the ML to allow this use. The next slide I have up would be, these are all the ML zones that then would there be, thereby be permissible if the municipal code was altered to include this particular project. So most of those are all fairly isolated locations that aren't immediately adjacent to sensitive receptors. The Stillwater Business Park area, you've got, you know, you do have some hotels that are out there and then you have wastewater treatment plant area and then F Street and then a slight, small spot which is on West Cap near Houston. So when you're looking at changing the municipal code to permit, you would be chasing it for all of these locations. So want to keep that in mind. The development agreement would be required. We currently have that in draft form and then of course, the conditional use permit would be part of that. Thus far, we're not aware of any issues as part of the existing river wellness on Evergreen operation. They have been operating long, but we're not aware of any issues or any calls for service as it relates to that project. With that, I would like to, you know, allow the applicant to have a chance to go into more depth or probably where your questions would lie is the operations of this facility. In the end, what staff is, is hoping to get is some input and level of concern, what is, issues the commission has and if there's ways that the project can be conditioned to alleviate those concerns or modify it to address those. That's the input that we're looking as, this is a workshop, it would have to come back for a formal hearing for all the entitlements requested at a further date and we would endeavor to address those concerns outside and bring it back at a future date, should the commission give us that direction. So I'll conclude my presentation.
And so to facilitate discussion tonight, I'd like to suggest that the commission, you know, sort of take it on the top level, which is sort of the municipal code amendments and this land use concept and then we can drill down, you know, from there, you know, into the specifics of this site. We'd also ask that if the commission has any particular questions of our representatives from police and fire, that we try to get to those, you know, early in the discussion so that we can let them get back to their duties.
Yeah, thank you for that. I act, I was going to recommend and consistent with that, that in this particular case, we, I can go down the line and see if commissioners have any questions specifically for staff, including our public safety representatives, and then I will turn it over. including our public safety representatives, and then I will turn it over to the applicant and anyone else who would like to comment. So I'll move forward with that. So we'll start with questions again for city staff. There will be another opportunity to ask questions after the applicants have had an opportunity to speak, but I'll start with Commissioner Lapore.
I don't actually have any questions or concerns, I just wanted to see if, you know, police and fire had any that they wanted to raise at this time.
And then please be sure to introduce yourself from the...
Evening, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, Brian Johnson, Fire Marshal, Fire Department. I don't have, or fire doesn't have any issues with the general use, so long as they construct the facility or construct improvements to meet the minimum code standards. There is one caveat, as the use is unique to West Sacramento New in general, there aren't specific codes to address the type of use. Within the fire code, we can require a third party to conduct a safety evaluation of their processes, and that would be something that we require.
Thank you, Commissioner Casio.
Just for fire and police, in terms of the other sites and the locations though, in terms of where they're located, in terms of, because we changed this zoning, this zone, it'll change all the others. Are there any, has there been any thought or any concerns about open those lots for the possibility of additional distribution centers coming and having to deal with that in terms of law enforcement and fire?
I don't think it's an issue so much for fire, I don't... Nathan?
Or Lieutenant Steele?
Good evening, Nathan Steele, I'm a lieutenant with West Sacramento Police Department. So, as far as the additional sites, this is actually the first time I've seen those additional sites listed. We looked independently at this project. It would be a case-by-case basis for us. It'd be rough for me to articulate without really having time to look in depth at each one of those locations. We're prepared to speak to this proposal tonight. We've had an initial review of the plans, we don't have any objections at this point in time. Moving forward, similar as with the other project, we would want to be looking at a security plan and have the ability to provide input at that time.
Thanks.
The way the municipal codes are structured, if we were to make this change, and if somebody else wanted to come and do this on another location within these zones, each one would be subject to a use permit and development agreement, and we'll be back before the planning commission and the council.
I guess the only, the only questions I have afterwards, I guess, to hear from the applicant is just the security plan. I want to get a better understanding in terms of what, maybe if they can outline a little bit of what that entails, because that's my biggest concern particularly, so.
Mr. Sturmfeld.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to both come back up for one question, for both the fire safety perspective and the site security perspective. I know this plan includes several secure areas and vaulted areas, I think multiple of each, and so I'm just wondering from a, for the fire suppression and safety standpoint, and then a safety standpoint for the site, how would both of your organizations interact with the firm in case of an emergency to handle what seems to be multiple secure areas within the building under different security levels?
Well, it's important, and it's part of the minimum code requirement to address egress and ingress of the fire department. So, on plan review, we would assure that, number one, that folks can get out if there was an issue at the facility, and then two, that we could get in if the need be. So, the minimum code allows us to assure that that would be provided.
Is there any additional complexity added with the multiple types of secure areas in the facility, or is that generally, you view that it was all the same as long as...
We would review that during, in the plan process and working with the police department as well to make sure that we're not compromising, you know, our concerns, but we'd make sure that that's addressed appropriately.
Thank you. Lieutenant? Thanks for being here, Lieutenant.
No problem. So, you know, similar with fire, fire's worried about people getting out, we're worried about people getting in. But, similar with the other project, we would, as part of our security check, we would do a walkthrough of the facility. I mean, at the end of the day, we have numerous businesses in this city that have secure locations, and so we really, that particular part of this project isn't unique to just this type of facility, but it would be part of our security review.
And then, from what you've reviewed of the project so far, are you envisioning any additional external facility needs as far as fencing or improvements of that type to the site?
So, I've initially looked at plans, that really, that type of stuff is what we'd be getting into when we actually get the security plan itself, and there'll be a full level of review when it comes to that.
And would that be prior to this item coming back to us, or post?
Yeah, that would be part of their, you know, movement forward, and if the direction from the commission was, is to definitely get in more involved with that, you know, that's something we'd certainly do is the use permit process.
The municipal code amendments would establish the requirement to have a security plan.
Right.
That is not something that we would be providing to the planning commission, because once it becomes a public domain, it's not very secure anymore.
Sure.
So, what we're, what we're asking on this, what we would be asking on this one, similar to the river wellness project, was that to put your confidence in Lieutenant Steele and the other police officers to ensure the security plan is adequate going forward.
Certainly, and Lieutenant Osi has a great deal of my confidence, but I believe in the previous project, a lot of that work was done prior to the item coming to us, that there was a security plan, and some of the SEP Ted work had been done, and police were actually confident at that point in supporting the project based on the measures that they had already talked to the applicant about. So, I guess my question is like, timing of, if this item does come back to us again, is there, would that, should we expect that work to be done, and, you know, be able to have a statement from police saying that they're comfortable with where they're at and that that work's been done, or is it going to be one of those, this is an item that gets discussed after the project is approved?
Yeah, I don't know that we would have, you know, a full security plan, you know, fully, you know, completed and ready to execute, you know, at the, you know, upcoming hearing stage. What we're trying to do is make sure we establish the requirement to have such a plan, and then they can work that out through the construction details with Lieutenant Steele and Brian.
And the reason I ask is, I think, you know, we've done a similar type of facility, not the same, I recognize, in a different zone, we're talking about potentially creating another type of use in a different zone, and so I'm assuming we're going to see more of these projects come forward, and I'm just trying to develop kind of a standard framework for us to know what to expect when the item, when future projects come before us about what work has been done leading up to the project coming to us. So, I think from my end, knowing that the police department, in particular, is far enough along in the project review to feel comfortable with the security plan, the security measures that the applicant's putting in place prior to us making a decision to approve is important on these types of projects.
Okay.
That's a piece of feedback, more than a comment. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Set for the public safety representatives? Okay, great. Commissioner Lu? Thank you. Commissioner Leibig?
Sure. Generally, good, good location for this project. I know we're going higher level, but, and for the ML zone, I don't see too many obvious compatibility use conflicts, but since we'll be evaluating these on a case-by-case basis, I'm pretty confident with the land use that you've selected. For the applicant, when they do come up, if they can discuss byproduct and waste, treatment, and control, a lot of stuff comes in, you're making it, then there's the stuff that goes out, and how do we control that? That's something I didn't see in this plan, and will probably need to address, just having a bunch of bad pot brownies in the garbage can, probably not a good idea. Some of us like brownies.
Commissioner Lu?
Question for city staff. My understanding is that making this zone change would apply to, would make some changes to other zoning as well for consistency, why can't it be specific to this site only? I work in, you know, state politics, and you look through the state codes, and there's a bunch of exceptions, you know, listed. You know, why can't, can something similar to that be done? I'm just wary about opening up Pandora's Box in a way.
Yeah. Typically, we wouldn't want to just establish a land use right on one parcel, you know, that's in a similar, you know, that's in a zoning district with, you know, same zoning district with other parcels, and essentially give one particular landowner an exclusive, you know, right to do something. We tend to look at these more on a, on a zone or district-wide basis, rather than sort of spot zone, you know, one particular property. Ms. Walker may, you know, want to jump in, but I don't know, there's a prohibition on actually changing it for one property, but generally, we'd want to look at it more broadly than just one lot.
Generally, there is case law against what would be called spot zoning, only rezoning one parcel to allow a particular use, which is why we're looking at all parcels that are under the same designation.
So, I'm going to allow public safety to leave. I will provide then the footnote, however, that when this item does come back for a decision from the planning commission, I'm sure that my fellow commissioners join me in requesting that not only do you or a colleague attend, but also that you provide, you know, a pretty thorough review, because we will be asking for your expert opinion moving forward. All right, so thank you for that. So this is not, there's no need necessarily for a public hearing. I do have four speakers who are with the applicant. The order, first I have Erica Graves and then Leslie Engelking, so Ms. Graves, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, thank you all for being here. I'll address the fire concerns maybe first, in case they want to leave.
Actually, hold on one minute. So, is the applicant required to be subject to the three-minute rule, or because of applicant, do different rules apply?
Typically, it would be, to your discretion, but typically, we would afford the applicant, you know, sufficient time to make their presentation, and then if they have other people with them, they're obviously trying to be as, you know, concise as possible.
Right, and in that case, so I do have request to speak cards, but what I might do is allow the applicant to make a presentation, then your colleagues can join in as needed or as they desire, so I think we won't do the time clock, but please be judicious with your time.
I will, absolutely. I talk fast, so that's good. First, we do have a security standard operating procedures in place, drawings to that effect, and so we can absolutely, as of, after this meeting, sit down with both fire and police and discuss that. Like was mentioned, we can't make it a public record, because then it's no longer effective. But we have all those procedures in place, they align with the state law, state regulations, especially, I think there was a question, oh, like with fire, fire being able to get in, get out, they would have access to our building. We actually want to work with them. We have our standard operating procedures, and Leslie will talk about those, and we have them set up on a database that we can actually give fire and police access to that, and so they can sign into our system and see all of our protocols, see who to contact, all of that. We're like an open book for them, and so that is all accessible to them. We want their input, you know, I happily will work with them to make sure that we're complying with state regulations, local regulations, fire code, and all of that, and those are all addressed in our standard operating procedures. The, I think that was mainly their general concerns. So, next I will go, I'll introduce myself, my name is Erica Graves, I am the CEO and owner of this business. I'm an attorney in Sacramento area, I've been an attorney for ten years, I started as a criminal defense attorney. How I got into this industry is trying to help people before they got arrested and comply with the laws and be good actors, and really just a passion to help people. All the studies that come out about the medicinal effects of this, I really think there's a chance to kind of pave the way in that, and so we really want to be good actors and help people. So, that's kind of, that is, that's our mission statement and our plan. Our other team, my head of operations and my partner in this, he unfortunately could not be here, he was stuck on a flight and his flight's delayed, so, but he is helping me run this and run our team, and then I will let my team, they're really the ones that you want to hear from. Leslie is guiding us with our standard operating procedures, her focus standards, she'll tell you all about that. And Andrew is our science master and the one who's going to be operating these machines, and so I think after you hear from them, I'll let them kind of be quick and tell you the process, and then we are planning on just leaving it open to you and addressing, you know, all of your questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Engelking, I'm the founder of Focus. Focus stands for Foundation of Cannabis Unified Standards. We're a third-party, independent, nonprofit standards development and certification organization. So, we spent three years taking guidelines from the World Health Organization, from the Code of Federal Regulations for Pharma, Nutraceuticals, HACCP, OSHA, that sort of stuff, and putting together cannabis-specific good manufacturing practices. They're very comprehensive, they cover everything from cultivation, retail, extraction-infused products, security, sustainability, both external sustainability, land use, that type of stuff, but also internal business sustainability, how to be good corporate citizens, that type of thing, as well as packaging and labeling. So, Erica's chosen to work with Focus, because we basically provide a blueprint for how to run your business in a safe, effective manner, where you can produce quality, consistent products without issues, that you have all of the procedures in place for tracking everything. So if there were to be an incident with a product, something that they brought in from a supplier, they would have the controls in place within their procedures to recognize that immediately before it ever hit the hands of customers. We work closely with both fire and police, and both agencies have provided input on our standards through the development process. So they basically cover everything, and I can address the waste management issue, I can't remember who said it now, but the standards start with literally management procedures and go all the way down item by item and end up with waste management, and that has to do with chemical waste management, water, everything. They literally guide the business as a blueprint on how to run, and then we offer them standard operating procedures that they in turn internalize and make their own. The system that Erica was referring to, it's called Power DMS, it's a standards online platform. It houses federal aviation standards, law enforcement, fire. We chose the platform because of that compatibility with regulatory agencies. There's a lot of state and city government agencies that use the platform to manage their audits and certification processes internally as well. It does allow, the reason it's good for a cannabis business is because I've seen in my experience, and I'm sure everyone's kind of familiar with this, that you have a bunch of standard operating procedures in a big manual, and you bring them out when the state auditor comes through, and you show them what you're doing, and then it goes back on the shelf, and nobody actually uses them, right? So the way this Power DMS system works is it's all digital, all employees have access to the system, any changes are tracked within the system, all training is provided and done online throughout the system, so we can see when people logged in, reports can be created at any time, and fire and any type of first responders really, EMTs and all that too, have access to the data within their system, they can see schematics. So, one of the things when we first started Focus, we were asked to do some first responder training and kind of help guide first responders on what to do, because at this point, they still kind of are considered meth labs without that guidance, and so the part of this, they're not that, but that, without the information, you know? So this is one way for us to make sure that Focus clients are able to be transparent completely about their operations and really assure everyone involved about the safety and quality of their operations. I apologize for my voice, I went out sick all week, this is my first day talking, but I'll let Andrew talk a little bit about the operations, you know, specifically, unless you have questions you would like me to answer now, or however you want to do it.
I think we'll go through the whole presentation, and then, yeah, have questions for the panel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hearing from us. We view you as a major stakeholder in this whole process, and we need all stakeholders online and agreeing with what we're doing. Our number one concern is public health safety. That is something that we drive into our process by identifying the specifications that are required to produce pharmaceutical-grade substances. I'm representing Ms. Graves. My company is Orion GMP Solutions, we're a pharmaceutical process engineering firm with presence in Canada, the United States, and in South America, where we build out GMP pharmaceutical facilities that are manufacturing cannabis and distributing it as far as Walgreens in South America. So we have a good presence, as well as in Canada. We have certified one of the latest GMP facilities in Northern Toronto, and we bring that background with us to this facility. So, to get an idea of where we're going, I don't want to get too far into the details because of the time, and I promise you, I could speak to you all evening. If anyone's interested, I'll be available all evening. So, moving on here, we can look at this from a very simple perspective, as I- As I have a team of engineers and chemists, we really look at how to develop products from specifications. We say to start with, there must be zero contamination in the product. The operator who's working with it must, their safety must be taken into account. Consumer health, safety in every way. Recently, a man died in Northern California from ingesting a product that had mold in it. Any products that are incoming as raw materials to our process must be tested to meet those specifications and ensure all downstream products are free of contaminants. In particular, here in Northern California, pesticides are a very big issue. For us, the vetting of our vendors is essential. We cannot miss that step. And knowing that the supplies of what we receive will be made into medicine for humans to consume, we take that very seriously. So those specifications are then taken and driven into the process. As you look here on these process maps, I won't go into the details. We have multiple quality control checkpoints. We have quarantine. All materials that come into the facility, before we would ever allow them to touch anything near our production, they must be tested and approved by quality control before we would go out. That will be done through third-party testing laboratories that are accredited laboratories to ISO 17025 standards, as well as in-process testing that we will do in-house so that we can verify our results before we would even send anything out. So there are two steps of verification for any product before we would ever see a consumer. Going through each of the QC checks, we end up with a more and more refined product. And excuse me while I try and navigate this mouse. There we go. We have multiple storage steps, and we have many critical process steps. The design of the facilities is met, is meeting pharmaceutical containment strategies. Essentially, what we do is we provide physical barriers, whether that be physical gowning or that be the physical structure or physical air barriers that manage the contamination and potential for contamination that could come into the facility or leave it. So essentially, we look at every single step, every single end-product specification and any specification through the process, and we engineer it to meet those standards. Now, as I said, I could go on all night about that. Each box means something. We have standard operating procedures for every single one of these steps. Essentially, we start with the same starting materials. This is raw cannabis, whether it be what you call trim, which is the small leaves that come off the flowers, or the flowers, for different grades of products. At the end of the day, we have a high purity process. We put it through initial hydrocarbon extraction, and we have several proprietary steps that I would not like to disclose to the public. But we end up with a high purity concentrate that is approximately 90% or greater purity, which then goes into downstream products. In our process, that high purity gives us the flexibility to customize these products for specific cannabinoid therapies. Lots of indirect research has been shown that the levels of cannabinoids and their relative ratios directly influence the medicinal and therapeutic value of these products. We take that into serious consideration. We're using the latest research for the formulation of our products. We do not just take this and push it through a machine and then give it to a consumer. There is thought behind this, and there is scientific validation. We use scientific validation to ensure that each step of these processes, where there is a risk, we ensure that if something go wrong, we engineer it out. We use failure mode effect analysis to ensure that any step that goes on here, any stakeholder in the whole value chain, we ensure that the risks are mitigated. That said, I can go on with any specific questions, but I just wanted to touch on a few things that were important, and this is receiving materials. Our vendor vetting, once again, we must make sure that we have good vendors and that we're not just dealing with low-quality suppliers that may have pesticides in their materials. Just as well, our quarantine process, that we have locations staged for each step of the process. Every single piece of this manufacturing operation has a specifically defined segregated area for the process that's happening, and there is complete control through every single Pre-production storage, just as well, this would be described as our quarantine area so that no materials can enter the manufacturing space without having met our specifications. And then our lab equipment and processes, these are the different pieces of equipment we're using. They are typical for the industry as well as the pharmaceutical industry. Obviously, since this is a growing industry, there are multiple vendors for these. We have vendors across the country, and we have them secured for the exact equipment that we need for these processes. Finally, I'm going to talk about quality control. As I said, there will be both third-party testing and in-house testing. We need to be able to know immediately whether or not something meets our specifications before we would ever use it in any product. That said, there are multiple labs such as Steep Hill Laboratories, which is one of the top laboratories in the country that we have a personal business relationship with that we would be working with. Anything in terms of quality control will include not just product testing, but also environmental testing. How do we know that there's not contamination in the air ducts and that possibly mold or bacteria could be pumped into our product? How can we be sure that our packaging and labeling areas are completely controlled? The most essential process step where contamination could reach the consumer at the very last critical step before it reaches them. Across the board, everything is tested and monitored, and no assumptions are left unchecked. We use the scientific method, and we use valid methods, and we use the FDA guidelines, and most importantly, the framework of FOCUS standards. FOCUS standards, for a little bit more background, is a quality management system. There's very little difference from this from, for example, ISO 9001 or the 21 CFR Part 2101, ICH Q7, Q10. These are all quality management systems for manufacturing. This goes across even to aerospace and automotive manufacturing. How do we make sure that quality is always driven in? Well, if anything goes wrong in one of these processes that I've proposed on the diagram, there is a mechanism for someone who is there as a technician to say, "Excuse me, manager, something has just gone wrong." All right, very well. Manager responds, "Please write down what you've observed." The manager and the employee go through root cause analysis to identify what could have possibly gone wrong. What is the cause of this? How do we improve this system through corrective action and preventative action? Document it and let no gaps exist where problems have happened before so that we are continuously improving the process and that we are sure that safety of the consumer is the number one concern and that we always have pharmaceutical-grade products. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to hand it over or answer those directly.
Can I just address my question about, talk about having a safety protocol afterward, you know, like having a safety check through fire or police and then also third-party evaluators and stuff? And just talk about how that's built into the FOCUS system.
And a little on the, you know, just two or three minutes because I want to give my commissioners opportunity to ask some additional questions.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
No problem.
We have a very big and important consideration in all this. I've spoken a lot about process and the overall operational management and production concept. One essential piece to this is ensuring that it is safe to operate under all conditions. When we think about the quality control laboratory where there are high-pressure liquid chromatography machines, there's gas chromatography, there are all these considerations in the extraction process for the different ethanol and hexane solvents that will be used in the process. All of those need to be controlled and kept in storage containers that are meeting the specifications of not just the local municipality, but also national fire code. So in order to best handle that, we are going to retain a third-party industrial hygienist who will manage all aspects of engineering a safe facility for operation. Just as well, we would really appreciate the opportunity to engage with local law enforcement and fire department in any way so that we can be sure that all stakeholders, as I said, are able to get everything that they need out of this so that we can have a synergistic relationship throughout the entire community.
Thank you very much. So yes, you can have a seat, but I imagine that we may be asking members of your team, your applicant team to address some of the questions. But I'll start with Commissioner Laporte. Actually, let me, just, I would like to make sure that we're framing the conversation at the request of Mr. Tilly, which is, we're discussing today, we're not making any decisions, that the opportunity for the applicant's actual application to be considered for us to make a decision will happen at a future date. But today, we need to look at what a potential zoning change might mean, as well as any, voice any questions or concerns for either staff or the applicant for the next meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Laporte.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Were there any requests to speak from any members of the community that were not part of the applicant team?
I see none. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Gosh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for checking.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. I just, more of a statement. It seems like this is obviously a new field, not really a new field, but new for California. And you seem to have assembled a very professional team, and so I just want to credit you for that and look forward to hearing more about the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate the information presented. Learned a lot today as it relates to distribution, that's for sure. And the manual that you guys provided in the packet was very helpful in understanding the operations of the business, and you've addressed the public safety questions, and I'm sure we'll get a lot more into that as we move forward. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Sturmfelds.
I'd like to start by thanking staff for workshopping this item. I think it's a really good way for us to start moving forward after our first runaround with this new world that's approaching us and all the decisions that will be before us. I, I'm going to limit my comments and questions for the applicant out of res, well, one, because I don't think they're before us in official capacity at this point, but two, because I think the real purpose of tonight is for our commission to have a broader discussion about, is this a use we want to have in our community? If so, is this the right zoning for that? And are there other considerations we need to take? I know Commissioner Lebig mentioned before that he was, appeared to be somewhat comfortable with this zoning. I have some challenges with it, particularly, and mainly because I know we've already approved, we've already created another cannabis use and another zoning type, another type of zone, and I don't know how those two things overlay. And so what my concern is, is you have several different players in this new scheme of sales, direct sales, distribution, extraction now, which we're trying to define, and then probably manufacturing of food edibles and things like that. And I don't know if that would fall into this current definition or would be a new zone. But I think we need to have a, my preference would be that we stepped back and had a broader conversation about what do we want to do and what is the policy framework we want to set up, if any, for each of those categories. And to the extent those zones are different, how do they overlay? Because one of the things that concerns me about this application in particular is that the previous facility that we approved is on Evergreen. And while this is on the other side of the highway, the thing between it is a small, lower-income housing development and apartments that are, you know, in a socio-economically challenged area. And so we've now, we've approved a facility on one side, and there's a highway in between, there's a highway under it, and now we're going to approve, you know, we're considering the potential approval of a facility right on the other side. So we've created this almost pocket, you know, I don't want to liken it to the Beard District, but where we're going to have multiple facilities in a pretty confined area. I think we need to think a little more broadly about where is the best location for these types of facilities in our city? Do we need to take any additional action or maybe create some type of zoning overlay to ensure that they're only going parts of town that are a little further removed from some of our residential areas? And what are the considerations do we need to consider as this moves forward? I have a, I have a good deal of heartburn about moving forward with creating this new zone without thinking about the broader strategy and the broader policy implications of the M1 zone that we've already approved under a conditional basis and how those things overlay. And then if there's any other types of manufacturing or types of distribution or any other business lines that may need additional zoning or a different zoning classification that we're going to consider in the future. I just, I get very concerned about having pockets of these types of businesses, particularly when they're somewhat close to housing. So I think I'm going to kick it off and throw those concerns out there, and I'll probably have more to say later. But I wanted to start with that.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Vu?
No comments.
And Commissioner Lebig.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturmfelds. So just, if we can just have the discussion, I'm totally open for an open discussion, as long as Madam Chair is. So the other facility is a distribution facility. This is a lab. So there are two different uses. And I know we're comparing them because they're both cannabis, but they are two very different uses. And in this case, they're taking over an existing lab space. It was Tabor Labs. And so I think that specific location is good. I understand that there is a housing division in between the two locations, which is, well, I would just say that's an unfortunate housing location, given that they're tucked underneath two freeways.
Indeed.
But that's where they, that's where they put themselves. So, the, okay, so I guess I'm still comfortable with the ML designation. And the reason I am is partly because this is also conditioned. And so where we could put it into other industrial, I think the light industrial works for this because it's more of a lab facility. So I still, I still have concerns about the treatment of the waste. So everything inside the building, I get their security. I get that you're controlling chemicals that are combustible, and there seems to be a plan for that. I just want to make sure that there is a plan for the trash. So I think that's it.
I think it'd be fair to ask applicant to respond to your question.
About how you're going to treat the trash.
I'll talk trash. So I'm not going to go into all the specifics of what's in the standards and the requirements and the operating procedures, but all of it is there. And what we were thinking we would do is offer you all access to the standards and the SOPs through the online portal so you can kind of see what we're doing. You log in at your own convenience. It's private, your use, and you can read through all of that. But waste management is a huge part of every standard, whether it's for a manufacturing facility or, you know, a retail facility or anything. So all of that, as well as the, you know, environmental concerns around that have been addressed. And part of the process of them working with FOCUS is we come in and we use third-party auditors to audit their facilities, their procedures, check their training on their employees, and make sure that they are following the standards. Otherwise, their certification with us is revoked. So all of that stuff is made public knowledge as well throughout the year of that certification.
Okay. Thanks.
I might be, yeah, you might would want to...
Actually, I want to take this to the higher level. And I get that this is the project that we're talking about, but on the, on the whole municipal code, that we address the waste and safety or in some sort of statement that we are addressing safety and that it includes waste, higher, higher, much, much higher level.
I will say...
Oh, you came up here because people are watching at home and it gets recorded.
Sorry about that. I will say, you know, the standards that we will provide you that talk specifically about waste management, you can actually use that in your, the wording in your regulations or your conditional permits or whatnot. So it will give you some good guidance on that. That's all been made specific for cannabis.
Okay.
I can, I've actually addressed, I thought of this too. And I contacted a company, I know that there's a waste management company in West Sacramento, but there is actually a company that I have contracted with in Santa Rosa, and they're the first waste management company in Santa Rosa. And they're looking to come here because of, Sacramento has so much regulation in this industry, and so they're looking to open up a branch here. And they have actually played right into our waste management program. They know how to...
Can I just interrupt? You said the first waste management, is it waste management for cannabis? Is that what you want?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I'm sorry. It is a company directly for, and all that's all they do is cannabis waste. You know, there's chemicals, there's water, there's processed material, stuff that comes out that needs to be disposed of properly. And I can forward you all their material, but it's handled just like any other toxic waste, any hazardous material would be handled.
Thank you. As we can't really require any other applicants that would follow you to also use the same waste management, what we would be able to do is require appropriate treatment and management of waste. So just a bigger, better, broader thing. So, and general comfort, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with this. It's, it is a manufacturing facility. There's no public interaction as long as we maintain the safety standards that we put into the last project, which seemed to have been incorporated into this project. I think you've already checked most of the boxes for me. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of comments on this as well. The first is, when this item, when these items come, well, foreshadowing, I guess, when we see this as an action item, I would like to take the zoning and the application separately. I might even recommend that we take them on separate days. And I know that's going to extend the timeline for our applicants, but I think that's something really important to... to keep in mind, that the commission has an opportunity to entertain approval or not of some of these zoning changes in advance of having the applicant come forward. That way, I appreciate that the conversation came together because we're just having a discussion, but I think that'll be really beneficial. And that being said, I think would also be beneficial, one of the tricky things is that when you, when you're doing a public notice, it's a, people are noticed within a radius of a given property, and what I'm concerned about is that people may have strong feelings about this, and they wouldn't be noticed because they don't live within the vicinity, but they are residents and stakeholders in our community. So I think there's something to be said for that. I want to acknowledge that our city council has provided some policy direction that, West Sacramento, we don't necessarily want this to be a place of cultivating of cannabis or certainly retail cannabis, but there is an interest in this intermediary area, but that's tricky because of the devil's in the details. And so I do think that residents do care, and I think that it's the charge of elected and appointed officials like ourselves to represent our community, and to be honest, I'm not sure that I have a good grasp of what our, how our community feels about this. And so regardless of how I may feel individually, whether I think it's reasonable or not, I think that it would be helpful to have, again, like a public hearing and perhaps a little bit of outreach about that. I need to give that a little more thought about what kind of outreach, maybe it's just letting folks know that there will be, you know, a hearing about it at the planning commission, perhaps reaching out to particular stakeholders who I think may be more affected than others. But yeah, so I'd like to give that a little bit of thought and provide some feedback to staff, but those are my thoughts, is that I think that we should have them on two separate items, possibly two separate days, and I'll start with that, but I do know that we've raised a lot of things, so I think at this point we can kind of popcorn our discussion from commissioners who would like to respond to anything that's come up. Does anybody have anything else?
I did want to pose a question to city staff on the zoning piece because Commissioner Lebig made a great point that this is more of a lab-type use. I'm thinking Bayer Crop Science is not in this zone. Do you know what zone they're in? Because I would liken what they're doing very similar to this use.
No, no.
They're up there on, like, in Barquero, right?
Yeah, they're in Business Park. Through the general plan, we changed that whole Riverside Center to Business Park after over the years, doing it parcel by parcel. So, you know, the Business Park and ML are fairly close types of zoning. The Business Park allows for that type of use, but then would also allow for a full office type setup, too.
And, I mean, to me, it would be helpful to see some of these different overlays of particularly the M1 and the ML zone and where those locations are. I just, I'm sensitive to the point that we're approving individual types of uses for this industry, kind of with blinders on to the bigger picture of how we're treating this industry, and I think we, it would help me understand what we're considering and where in a broader context if we were able to do that. I know we may not be able to do that tonight, and I appreciate that, and on me for not bringing that to you sooner, David, but I think that would help me in this discussion, and maybe, maybe I'm the only one, and that's totally okay, but I feel like we're kind of making some of these decisions in a vacuum as one-offs where an applicant comes in, we're going to consider it, but we're not taking, we're not taking a broader perspective about what we want, where we want it, where we don't want it, and then, you know, kind of some of these deeper questions on specific conditions for these different types of uses. And we pushed through it last time around, and I, again, appreciate the pace on this one, but I still feel like it's very secular. We're taking them one at a time.
Well, and I want to respond a little bit to that, too. So when I said, I'm curious what people from, you know, stakeholders and residents in our community feel, I'm not only referencing concerns about public safety because marijuana is being discussed, I think that there's actually quite a bit of discussion of economic development opportunities and some really major innovation that is happening here. So I really would like kind of a bunch, to your point, a much broader discussion of, is this appropriate? I mean, one outcome could be, well, we should have this allowable in more than just this particular zone, you know, and I don't know that I have enough information to make that decision at this point. So, yeah, just wanted to make that point, that this may be actually something that's incredibly desirable, and we would like it to be a still conditional use. It still needs to come back at the discretion of not just staff, but for a governing body such as a planning commission, but to address that in a more comprehensive way.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep bear in mind, much, especially with the prior project, that, but for them, but for the particular commodity involved, we probably, we wouldn't even be having these, many of these discussions. You know, many of those would be, you know, we have distribution facilities, you know, all over town, distribute various types of things, and then we do have other, you know, this formerly was a lab, and then, as you mentioned, we have Bayer Crop Science and, you know, and probably at least, you know, a couple others that come to mine in town. So, you know, I want to put it in context, but given this is a new industry, and, you know, it does involve a commodity that is subject to some level of regulation, both at the state and federal level, we are proceeding, you know, cautiously on these, and we're taking them, you know, one at a time as they're here, and so tonight has been a good discussion about this particular spin on what really is a new burgeoning industry.
Thank you for that insight. Commissioner Vu, did you want, does anybody else want to provide? Again, we're not making a decision, but are there other comments we'd like to provide staff in advance, or the applicant in advance of the next time they come to us? All right, yeah. You can't just make noises into the microphone.
No, I can't. Can I? I wish I could sometimes. No, I have no other comments, thanks.
Okay. Excellent. And, so, yeah, so, Steph, do you have any clarifying questions? Do you have enough direction? Is it muddy? Is there anything else that you would like from the commission?
So if I gather right, so we, a couple of questions, we had Commissioner Vu referenced, you know, this particular parcel versus the broader, you know, ML district, so I think the first thing would be helpful for us to make sure we're clear on is that are we okay with this concept in the ML district in total, or perhaps, you know, a more refined geography within the ML district? We have the map up there, it's sort of a, a little bit of a hodgepodge, but the majority of this zoning district is, you know, west of 80, and so we, you know, we could continue to carry it throughout the entire ML district, or if you would favor, you know, a refined, you know, level of geography within that district, that's something we can entertain. And then also, you know, the commission will be making, the first step we will be doing in terms of an action will be making a recommendation to the council on the zone change and on the development agreement, and they would make the final decisions on those two items. We propose to carry the conditional use permit through as, for efficiency purposes, noting that even if your commission were to approve it, if the council chose not to approve municipal code amendments or the development agreement, that would make the use permit, you know, moot. So, but if, if you were, much like last time, if we'd rather, you know, deal with the legislative part first and then get, have the benefit of the council's direction on it, and then do the use permit afterward, that's what we did last time, you know, that can work. It's a little less efficient, but it can work, and it's your, it's up to your prerogative.
Yeah, that, at least that's what I'm saying, and I see some head nodding, but I'll say that my preference would be to address the policy issue before we address the specific applicant issue, because frankly, I haven't heard too many significant concerns raised about the applicant. I think there's a question about just what our policies are, that really, you know, whether this is something that we're going to move forward through on a policy level, and if so, what that looks like, what the restrictions are, what some of the specifics are.
And I thank you, Chair, and agree and appreciate the difference. That was a sticking point for me on this, the last project you came before us was trying to consider the policy before we considered the individual applicant, and I appreciate the latitude the commission gave, gave my request on that last time around, and I think it's a good, a good policy moving forward on these. The other thing, Secretary Tilly, if we could maybe consider bringing back next time, is some discussion, as the chair mentioned, on the economic development side of this. I mean, last time around, this, and we talked a lot about economic development opportunities around this industry. I know that we're, you know, talking about development agreements that specify this being as an economic development issue, but I'm not really seeing it that align with the city's economic development plans and strategies, and so I'm continuing to have a hard time aligning what I know of the work that economic development in our city is doing versus the opportunities around this and how they're being kind of handled. So to the extent we can have a policy discussion around that to try to help me better understand that alignment would be appreciated.
One, I'm sorry, one final question. Does the Capitol, West Capitol Avenue overlay affect the ML, ML on that, the ML zone on that one?
No, the West Capitol-
Can you get your oil changed next to their lab?
No, the West Capitol overlay ends at Houston Street, so that's, I don't know, half mile, three-quarter mile east of this project site.
Houston, okay, so, and that is, that's right before the other-
Much closer to Harbor.
That's the, right, right next to the other ML zone spot. Okay, thank you.
And I just want to mention, too, if folks are listening at home or if commissioners have additional comments, ideas, or feedback, they could contact Mr. Hardy, is that correct?
Yeah, he's the point person for this project.
All right, and your information is available online.
Correct.
Great, okay. So with that, I will close item four, and from there, thank the applicant for coming and doing their presentation. Thank you very much for public safety for staying, and we'll move on to section A in formal discussion. Any commissioners have anything to add, comment?
Just schedule-wise, we will be meeting at our next regular scheduled meeting in two weeks, and then I would plan to cancel our meeting of, next meeting after that, which would be July 6th, I believe, and then likely meet again on July 20th for, those will be our next two meetings.
Thank you for that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.